But we can't make a decision because then the table is gonna be injured.
Jay not coming in?
I don't know.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the uh our October second planning commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and uh ask Mr. Slavy Wood for a word of prayer.
Boy God, thank you for the day you've given us today. Thank you for this opportunity to come together to to serve the citizens of our community. While we think about all those folks that are out there uh serving and protecting us today, all of our emergency responders or law enforcement, probably everybody that's uh doing their job today so that we can conduct the business right here in safety and security and the freedoms that you allow us to enjoy. While we think about all of the freedoms that you have granted to us, given to us and blessed us, we know that those come from you. We return our thanks to you this morning. Help us, Lord, to serve you out of a heart of gratitude for all you do for us in Christ's name again.
Morning Jay.
I need you to be here.
I'll do better. Approval of August twenty eighth minutes.
Most approve.
Jay comes in late and makes a motion to approve.
Actually, it's just now nine o'clock.
I'll second that motion.
Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussions?
Amen.
All in favor?
Ah.
Old business. Have any old business? No old business?
I would say one thing I have and I wish I'd have got here before you said it. Uh Clay Burns is having open heart surgery. The mayor of Richmond is having open heart surgery this morning. I have to get by Clay. Remember him in prayers.
Thank you.
Was this something?
Said.
So, okay, cause I just saw him yeah yesterday and that's why I was wondering so. Yeah, let's remember to keep him in our in our prayers. Alright, new considerations?
Yes, sir. First item under new considerations, uh Spring Hill Missionary Baptist Church, they're seeking a twenty-five foot variance to construct a thirty-five hundred square foot addition at one twenty-seven Spring Hill Drive. This is a twenty-five point one acre parcel that is zoned R one B. This is an aerial view of the property. The church unanimously voted to deed forty feet of their property to the county as right of way to widen the road. The right of way would start at the rear corner of the church and extend past the new addition where the road splits on Cleve Harbor. And these are surrounding properties.
If you could go back to the picture with the church.
It's the road, the road to the left.
Now, go one more, yeah, you said that road to the left, Brad?
Right there by the corner of the building.
Right, that's the original road now, so they're willing to give us forty feet, so that road, I mean, literally it runs right by the church.
So the county owns that road currently?
Right, so they're willing to give us, you know, so it can be.
Do we have that scheduled? That work? That's first I heard of it.
No, they're just giving it so in the future that we will have access to move that road over if we need to.
I got you.
You know, because it it goes so close to the church?
Yeah.
There wasn't no setback with it.
Yeah, so anyway. Okay.
So what is that to the right? That's a different road.
Yeah, it splits right there.
I mean, why can't we get rid of that one road?
Well, there's houses down there.
Well, they can't go around the other way or in the right?
Yeah, it's Spring Hill Drive and Cleve Harbor.
No, the only way they can get to it would be an airplane.
Okay, well, I I didn't know.
Yeah, no, but I looked at it and I was just trying, they were willing to give us, you know, in the future to to get away from the church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably nobody's caught that corner of that church.
Well, I think they have before.
Better take it away and get it.
Alright.
Okay, next up we have Twanda Green. Uh she's seeking a conditional use permit to place a twenty twenty-four twenty-eight by fifty-two manufactured home on Andrew Chapel Road. This is a five acre parcel that is zoned R A one, which allows for manufactured homes through a hardship. This is an aerial view of the property. Ms. Green recently experienced the loss of her spouse and is wanting to relocate closer to her family for help and support. We do have a letter from her doctor providing hardship. And these are surrounding properties. Next up we have Thomas Ainsworth. He's seeking a conditional use permit to operate a used car lot with a maximum of three vehicles at eight twenty-two Bethel Road. This is the three point one acre parcel that is zoned A one. This is an aerial view of the property.
Is that a house?
Yes, yes, sir.
They want to turn that into a car lot?
They're wanting to, they're wanting, there's a little building to the side of it. They're wanting to make an office and then add a driveway and do a maximum of three cars.
Is that your district?
Yeah. The proposed use is classified as a C three use. Mr. Ainsworth will be a sole employee with the purposes, with with the proposed hours of Monday through Friday by appointment only and Saturday from nine AM to two PM. He plans to convert an existing storage building into an office for himself. And these are surrounding properties.
Is there some limit on like, how many cars do you even have to have to call it a car lot? I mean, couldn't you sell three cars out of your yard without it?
Well, I think the auto industry has some limitations on how many you can do.
Oh, right. Okay, got it, okay.
I think he's gonna have ten thousand square feet to be approved for a license.
A parking lot or a car.
Of area, of area.
An- anything that it, the zoning implication is that by necessity it would be outside storage of wares, goods that are available for sale. That that implicates the reason why we have to have a zoning consideration because we don't allow that in in any zoning context except C three.
Got you.
It's not zone C three. It's not appropriate to rezone this property because everything that surrounds it is
Root types.
either residential or agricultural. So thi- this can't be done by way of a rezoning, which is why it's coming before you as a condition use. So did, have we sent out the letters or are we intending to?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we've already sent those out.
Okay.
So you don't post it in this situation?
Sir.
We don't post the property?
It's posted, but we're we're going the extra step on this one, Jay.
Yeah.
We're gonna mile.
Yeah.
That road's not too long.
Yeah.
Yeah. Seems okay.
Alright, next up we have Diane Owens. She's requesting conditional use permit to operate an after-school center at two eighty-seven McCollum McLenn Road. The property is zoned A one. Here's an aerial view of the property. The center will serve children ages five to twelve with proposed hours of operation Monday through Friday, two thirty PM to six PM. Full day programming may be offered on school holidays, teacher workdays, and during summer break from seven AM to six PM. This is a photo of the daycare Ms. Owens currently runs adjacent, adjacent to the proposed property and surrounding properties.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Looked at it and, you know, everything is, they do good for the community right there in that area.
She's just expanding.
Right, she just expanded.
Alright, next up is Donna Burks, seeking a conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental at three seventy-two Swan Drive. The property is zoned R one B. It's an aerial view. The home is a two-bedroom, two-bath property spanning eleven hundred and twenty square feet. It was purchased for remodeling and investment purposes, initially targeting long-term stays for travel nurses and medical staff seeking off-site accommodations. The property is carefully micromanaged and guest screened to ensure stability and maintain quality standards. Mistress Burke has provided a list of house rules. And here's surrounding properties.
So the last time we did this, we have some set policies already, right?
Yes.
So, okay, alright.
That'll be part of the conditions.
Yeah.
Okay.
To help you guys to to s- to receive a copy of our, what we refer to as our short-term rental policies. They help you to see that when we come into these, anytime you grant a permit, typically the staff requests that you apply those policies to that conditional use permit. That's our standard way of handling it. So if y'all are curious about what are the policies, we can provide that to you. Did we provide that to the African by chance?
Yes.
Stuff like this, no parties. No loud music.
Yeah.
Quiet hours.
Just normal stuff.
Yeah, we tell them they can't crash on the road, so many vehicles.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, just normal stuff, yeah, absolutely.
They're they're basic policies that are designed to be good neighbor.
Yep.
Don't create problems.
Yes, got it.
Stay on topic. We require somebody associated with the ownership of that unit to actually be available within a two-hour notice we have an issue. But that's the kind of policies we're talking about.
Got it.
Okay.
KLF Farms LLC is seeking a conditional use permit to mine four acres on highway, um highway eighteen. This is a one hundred acre parcel that is zoned A one. Here's an aerial view of the property. KLF Farms has applied for the four acre notice of exemption from M D E Q. This is their construction entrance and surrounding properties.
He is the engineer that is building the new engineering on Marquette Road, so he's been hauling dirt from that site to this site.
So he's not gonna need to expand it after this, yeah?
Unless, I don't know, I I just told him if he plan on, he's done hauling dirt to Marquette.
Yeah.
I just told him if he wanted to apply for conditional, if he wanted to sell some dirt, he would need to apply for conditional use and that's where he's done.
Is that all that on eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
That's kinda dangerous, but.
I mean, he got approved from him by, he's done the permitting through him by.
So he was using that dirt for his own
Personally.
commercial building that's being constructed.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Nah, he's done with that and now he's planning on, he's had a few people reach out to him.
Shoot, we might need some.
This time, it's to the public hearings?
Yep.
Are they all the same time?
No.
No, it's first two.
Alright, I make most approve one and two for October sixth.
I second that. Jay made a motion to approve one and two for October sixth. I second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion, say three, four, five, and six for October fifteenth.
I second that motion. Brad made a motion. I second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
We have one item under site plan architectural review. It's Country Junction. They're proposing to construct a four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five square foot convenience store on the corner of Main Street and Highway forty-nine South. The property is zoned C three, which allows convenience stores outright. The entrance to the property will be off Main Street.
Where's that?
Restaurant forty-nine.
And and star.
Star, oh, Star Main Street, okay, got it, yeah.
Is it on my side or your side?
It's on my side.
So the same people just moved across the road?
No, it's on the, it's on the east side of forty-nine, isn't it?
I'll get over what's on.
It's on the west side.
Okay.
At the corner.
It's right there by Paul's Body Shop, right there.
Oh, okay.
There's another one.
Right, right, yeah.
Alright.
Uh the building will feature brick exterior and trimmed with metal. And these are the elevations and landscaping plan.
Alright, stop right there. Uh only issue, I've looked at, you know, the drawings, I don't know how wide the entrance is right there, you know, coming in. You know, corner, it's not on the draw. I'd like to, you know, go over some little more details with that. And the trees are crape myrtles that, you know, is planted right there. I'd like him to get rid of the crape myrtles at the entrance, so when you're pulling up, you don't have a tree in your way. I know a lot of people for landscape reading, but to me, that's the worst thing to do at your entrance. You've got a tree, you can't, so if somebody's pulling out, they can't see what's coming in two years when that tree gets, nobody's tending to it.
That's right.
You know, we can get rid of, uh, you know, the crape myrtles at the entrance. And uh and like I said, I don't see any footage, you know, like how wide the entrance is and how, you know, from the back of the pumps to the curb, you know, some stuff like that.
Okay.
Um.
It doesn't look like they are planning for eighteen wheeler or diesel.
Right.
Uh they're not gonna be providing that, so I don't think you'll have the heavy truck traffic in and out there.
Right.
That's right.
Right, but I still would like, you know, for somebody with a, say, a sixteen-foot bumper pull trailer, cause it is, you know, kinda out in the country.
Yeah.
You know, just like that little island to the, to the left right there, and I'm sure that's probably for a handicap parking. I assume, you know, for a handicap, I I could be wrong, but I don't see a handicap drawing.
Yeah, we, we haven't received plans from the
We've got them.
But do we have those? Yeah, we're just trying to get through those, um.
Okay, well, yeah, I'd just like to sit down and and go over some things, because just like that little island, if it was, if it is the handicap, it was moved over, that would give somebody, if they did have a
They could turn in.
little sixteen-foot trailer, they could come in, you know, and fuel up.
And what we typically do is before the final, we make sure the landscaping is in place how it needs to be
Right.
before we see over the building.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, just, yeah, I'm good with, just keep me informed so we can, I like, say, sit down with them and, you know, a few little things like that to
Sure.
uh go over on that.
Yes, sir.
Sid, I think your motion would be to approve the site plan subject to your further review of the final details.
That'd be my motion.
Okay.
Second.
I made a motion to approve with the final details, uh after reviewing it, uh Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
Um I sent this to Tim, it was weeks ago, uh the hydraulic calculations, drainage, and it was good.
Right, have you got, what about the health department?
That usually comes whenever it's tough at the power.
We haven't gotten that for you.
Okay, cause I know it's gotta be a treatment plan or
Oh, yes, sir.
you know, something to that effect, and we just need to make sure
Yes, sir.
with a neighboring property right there.
Is that the one that tried to get access through the body shop?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey Kobe, you mind if I step out there and get Mr. Ringer?
Are we, are we ready to talk about the nuisance consideration at this point?
Let the attorney come in.
Okay, alright. Alright.
So did we, did we vote on that? The first one, Country Junction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
You were busy on your phone.
Yeah, I was. You got me.
Do you, uh, you guys wanna take item two?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do two.
Mr. President, you good?
Yeah, I'm good, let's.
Alright, we'll take item two under nuisance considerations first. This will be the Marilyn Boyd nuisance property at two forty Willa Lane. It's a District Two property. Uh we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Boyd or anyone on her behalf to be prepared to come forward. Brian's gonna demonstrate with the photos.
Okay, we received a complaint on July the sixteenth for accumulation of rubbish and garbage. No contact has been made with the property owners. Certified letters have been received. And these are the pictures that were taken yesterday. This was before and after.
What is that blue stuff?
A coat or something.
Storage.
Storage bin.
Yeah, the picture's different than what the computer says.
I was by there a couple of weeks ago and that's kinda, it looked about like that when I saw it, so not, not as bad as that first picture, but.
So they have cleaned up, made a temp or?
Some, something's been done. I I didn't know the difference, cause I don't have been by that.
I knew just.
Like refrigerator, stuff like that.
Let them monitor.
That's, that's the best thing to do.
Well, it's good, I thought. Is it bad?
The beginning?
No, where we're at now.
It's not bad.
They got rid of the refrigerators and stuff like that?
You know, like the larger items are gone, but there's still
There's still stuff there?
Little bits.
Yeah, all that, that porch to the right of that picture is is covered up.
Well, yeah, alright.
All would be to go ahead and declare the nuisance and allow the staff, especially since they haven't responded or anything.
Is anybody here representing?
Marilyn Boyd.
Marilyn Boyd.
Anybody? Okay, so I make a motion for that.
Yes, sir.
Motion, go ahead, declare the nuisance and the staff will uh then inter- interact with the justice court to uh to put it under the court's consideration.
Okay.
Or hopefully that will address it.
Same.
Same.
Dr. McLeod made a motion, declared a nuisance, uh Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries. You can go ahead with one.
Yes, sir. Are we ready?
On one?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh the, the next item is the Robert Wall Jr. nuisance property. This is five, five sixty-nine Seventh Day Road. This is District One property. I will open that public hearing. Uh I will ask Brian to demonstrate with photos. I'll ask Ms. Wall or anyone on his behalf to be prepared to come forward to address the board.
We received a complaint on May twenty-first for an unsafe structure and equipment, trash, debris, tall grass, and weeds and vacate, uh vacant abandoned property.
Hope you can see it better than I can.
Certified letters were mailed and no contact has been made with the property owners.
When were letters mailed?
They are in May.
May, around, May twenty-first?
May twenty-third.
May twenty-third.
And the hearing letter was May of September, I repeat.
And we got no response from the certified letter on May twenty-third.
The only letter we got was from the attorney representing, just stating that the grass had been cut. But the gentleman we spoke to this morning said that, um, he works for the, uh he represents the estate.
Uh state, yeah.
And they've worked on cleaning it up a little bit. He just asked for extended time on it.
Yeah, these are updated pictures.
Is anybody else here that ain't wanna speak on it? I know this has been an ongoing issue since, for a year or two.
Come on, yes, yes, come on up.
Please, please give your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Cheryl Diane Speed. I live at one ninety-six George Speed Road, Collins, Mississippi. I am my mother's proud attorney. My dad passed away in June of twenty-four. I'm caring for my mother. This was, I had, and this is my mother and stepdad's property. I had, I was not aware of all of this until I received the first letter mailed, and I did call and responded to that first letter. And, um.
Who did you respond to?
I think it was him. Um I, I got my notes at the house. David Ringer is supposed to be here with us, but, and, um, they told me that what I need to do and and all that, and I told him I was, me and my husband were getting down there, cause it's only me and my husband there to clean up. My brother lived on this property, which is next door to that property is his, is my nephew, his son. And, um, I asked my brother and my nephew if they could come help us clean up that property, cause my husband has COPD and emphysema. And this was just thrown in our lap, you know. I only done what my mother and dad, stepdad asked me to do, and that was to take care of them. And they made me proud attorney. And like I said, I didn't know, that's embarrassing really to me, to know that my brother let that place get like that. And my mother and dad hadn't been down there in years, they, cause they eighty-eight and eighty-nine, they didn't, they didn't go down there to see how it was. And so, that's.
So do you have a plan by any chance to move forward to address this?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, we, we got a plan.
We're gonna tell you name.
My name is Darrell Speed.
Yeah.
My mother.
Yes.
And I'm the one that's been, what y'all have already seen in pictures, pushed it all and cleaned it as well as I can with a tractor.
Yes, sir.
The only way I can do this is I've got to have time to get a, to rent a tractor. I run the hoe, I know how to run all the equipment.
Yes, sir.
To get, to get this stuff picked up and get it, do it away, but I can only do so much at a time.
Yes, sir.
I, I got to have time.
We will work with you as long as you're doing something, you know.
And we even live on a fixed income, so trying to rent a tractor is another thing too, you know.
Right, sure.
And so.
Are the plans in the future to get it cleaned up and sell it, or y'all wanna keep it or?
Well, my mother now is, is in a, um nursing home. I took care of her for a year after my dad passed away, my stepdad passed away, and so whenever I put her in the nursing home, I had to turn everything over to Medicaid. And so, um.
Oh, so this is the nursing home's property now?
Yes, sir. Well, I, I say, I say it is.
And if the bay, you water it and get out of it.
But, but there would be a lien, yes.
But, um, my mother's doing better and my goal is to bring mama back home with me.
But she's not coming back there.
No, she, she means a two forty-two Green Hill Road.
Yeah. Yeah.
And my goal is to bring my mama back home.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as far as like who owns the property, I'm not really sure if it's Medicaid or whatever.
Well, I tell you, I, I think we'll declare the nuisance.
Can I ask a quick question just to clear something up that you, you, you're here in your representative capacity as your mom, your mom's power of attorney.
I am her power of attorney.
You don't actually own the property. It's still your mom's property. I didn't make that clear to you guys?
No, sure, I don't.
But you have the authority to sell the property, correct?
Not necessarily, sir.
You do, no.
Yeah, because that, with the Medicaid office, I mean, the Medicaid's got tied in with it now.
Yeah.
Well, they would get, uh, Porsche or all of it.
Well, in your capacity as her, your mom's power of attorney, I, you, you're not here telling the board that you're making a decision about whether your mom wants to return to the home place. You, that's her decision to make, but at this point, she's not made that decision. She's being here for in the nursing home.
Yes, sir.
Right, so it's possible that your mom could return to this location. It'd have to be cleaned up, it'd have to be fixed up, but she could. This could be, uh this, it's important for you to say yes to, to my question.
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, she may want to live there.
Exactly.
Cause that's where, that's where we all grew up at since I was four years old.
Just in case anybody from Medicaid may be listening, uh mom could in fact return to that location right there. Very good.
Yes, sir.
That's what I wanna make sure of.
My motion, go ahead.
The, uh, uh the, the implication here is we actually don't have the owner in front of us to, to address anything specific, right? But we do have folks who are willing to help, and I think that's a good thing, and I do appreciate the work that's already been done. And I wonder if we can extend a little grace and give time. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, yeah, my motion is you declare the nuisance and give y'all thirty days, you know, some more time and we'll monitor it because we've had since May, and that's six months or four months, and you know, nothing's really been done, so that's why I'm willing to, you know, hey, uh, give y'all, you know, we'll go ahead and declare the nuisance so we don't have to come back here to the, and, and perform this, and we'll monitor it and and, uh, give y'all another thirty days and see what kind of, right, see what kind of progress.
Lo- loads of making improvements.
I mean, we've been down there already five times working on it.
I've, I've been there and
Right.
Several times.
But there's so much of it.
Yeah, I know, posted.
Right.
It didn't happen overnight. I mean, it's been
I'm limited to how much time I can do this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just, we can, we can't afford to hire someone. If I could, I'd do it tomorrow.
Right.
Get it gone away from.
Right, well, that's what I said, we'll, we'll do it and, you know, we'll monitor it and
Okay.
give you thirty days and we'll, that way we're not coming back here, but we declared a nuisance and, you know, give you thirty days, see what kind of progress and and go from there.
Alright.
I thank y'all for y'all's patience and understanding.
Right, thank, thank you.
That's right. Y'all have a blast.
Second.
Y'all have a good day.
I made a motion. I made a motion. Doctor McLeod seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Gentlemen, the next item, the, 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 the next item under section is consideration of a potential action. This would be under a specific code section forty-three dash thirty-five dash one oh three C, and that, uh, that code section authorizes the board to receive information, data, evidence, concerning the potential hazardous situation on real property. This is a little bit different from our normal nuisance consideration, so I wanna just highlight that for the board's education. This, this is different from normal nuisance. It'll look similar to how we handle nuisance, but the considerations are, are different because it's under a different code section. Uh, so, uh, on this occasion, we're going to open a public hearing under forty-three thirty-five one oh three C, uh, to entertain evidence concerning the property at three sixteen Woodlands Drive. It's a District Two property. The owner is Alice Pasinger, and so I'll ask Ms. Pasinger or anyone on her behalf to be prepared to come forward and to address the board. Brian will demonstrate with photos.
We received a call from the fire coordinator on August twenty-second. They received a call for a deceased female inside the home. At that point, the fire coordinator conducted an emergency life safety inspection and observed several hazardous conditions that poses a significant risk to life and safety. I received a call from Larry Swells, who's handling this, and he's in the process of, uh, getting bids to get the house cleaned up. And they're gonna strip it down, uh, they're gonna take the sheet, rip, strip it down to the studs and clean it up, and, uh, they're gonna try to sell the home.
This is a statement, Brian, is that what you think?
He's, there, there's, there's a sister in Florida, um, and she's gave everything to Larry to, to handle, and that's what, that's what he told me.
Okay. I'm wondering if it's a conservatorship situation or if this court proceeding is somehow involved in this. We just don't know the details on that.
We don't.
Perhaps, gentlemen, what we can do today is just kind of an interim step for you guys, which would be to, uh, instruct your staff and law enforcement and or your fire coordinator to make sure that public access, any potential access to this structure is blocked, barred, notices are put up that says do not enter, whatever we need to do to make it safe for the community by getting notices in place. That's about as much as we need to do. It sounds like action is gonna be taken to address this, so we won't need to address it as long as that action moves forward. But we do need to make sure that the place is secure for the community. So I would just request that we entertain a motion to stay action on this proceeding with the exception of notifying our staff to make sure that the place is secure.
Yes, I'm, I'm.
Right, absolutely. Yeah. Now, this is clearly gonna be beyond our solid waste collection contract. We, we can't have waste management unless they're willing to take it out of bag at a time.
No, that's.
So, uh, that, that won't suit anybody's interest here. So they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to hire a dumpster to actually come in and then haul off all of that. Alright, so would that be your motion, Dr. McLeod?
That would be my motion, yeah.
I'll second that. Doctor McLeod made a motion. Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is any of that can be seen from, I mean, that's in a subdivision.
It's inside the house, though.
Everything's inside.
You can't, you can't tell anything in, from the outside.
Hmm.
Look like a normal house, pretty much.
Do we need to put a condemned sign out on the property?
I, I don't think that's necessary. I just think we need to make sure we give Brett to make sure that whatever signage we feel like is needed, don't let the kids in the neighborhood know. Not say, go in here, guy. Let, let Brett do that.
Oh, yes, sir.
Alright, so, is that all?
That's all we have.
That's all we got? That's all, uh, I guess we're recessed October thirtieth? I make the motion recess.
Second.
Jay made a motion recess October thirtieth. Doctor McLeod seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'd like to call to order our board of supervisors meeting. Uh, public comments. Got anybody with public comments? Okay, uh, Keith Hicks. I do have a question. I was trying to look for it. There was a nonprofit on there that we was waving. That's what I was trying to, uh.
I saw that too.
Yeah, I was curious what, what is that?
D under six. Primary purpose club.
My bad, it's under, that's the next meeting under her. Yeah, right, okay. I thought it, it got put in the wrong thing on email, but that was it. Everything else, anybody else got any question on the consent? Everybody good with it? I hadn't looked at it, but I will before we have our meeting Monday. Yeah.
Additional business?
Additional business?
Yes, sir. We have one item under additional business, gentlemen, uh, that I know of. Uh, and this is a discussion of a potential action regarding proposals on ancillary employee benefits. This is our life accidental dental vision, et cetera.
At, at this time, I'm gonna, uh, recuse myself and let, uh, Vice President, Mr. Calhoun, take over.
Record will reflect that Mrs. Scarborough, uh, has recused himself and he is now exiting and, uh, is not going to participate in any of the discussions concerning this matter. So, for the, the three of you that remain, uh, we will proceed. Uh, so, uh, gentlemen, we've received three proposals. Uh, your administrative staff, uh, that's myself, Mr. Hicks, Ms. Wanda Martin, uh, Ms. Rebecca Whittington, and Ms. Kim Griffith went through the proposals, kind of evaluated those, uh, looked through and made sure we understand, uh, how the responses were structured and basic information concerning that. We're prepared if the board is interested. We still don't have Mr. Gaines with us, not really sure, uh, about his situation, but have been hopeful that Mr. Gaines would be able to be here and participate in this. And so I'm not really sure what the board's pleasure is. Uh, we, we had thought about going ahead with the discussion, uh, and then allowing the board to decide at some point whether it wants to make a decision, and if so, uh, when will we make that decision? And it could be that the board is interested to wait, see if Mr. Gaines might be able to be with us on Monday, which would afford us an opportunity to actually arrive in a decision on which of the proposals.
Is there a deadline on this matter?
You know, we need to, we get, we need to get moving, and that's because we have an open enrollment for all of the employees that's out there on the horizon, coming pretty quickly.
When is that, the date?
Well, it's gonna be in November, but we need to.
We need to.
There's a lot of.
Paperwork.
A lot of, uh, grunt work, shall we say, that has to take place based on the decision of the board. And so to get ourselves ready for open enrollment, we kind of do need a decision. I, I think we'd be okay if y'all wanna wait till Monday to make a decision on this. You can do that. I, I don't wanna belabor the discussion. We may have individuals who are here, uh, to, to be present as the board is discussing these items, but.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, I'm not gonna be here Monday.
Okay.
Okay, and so.
Well, if you're not gonna be here Monday and if she is gonna recuse herself, then we better take it up today.
Yeah. It's, it, it's gonna get tedious because it looks like the way things are playing out.
Well, could we wait and do it the next meeting?
We can do it on fifteenth, but that's getting us really, really close.
That'd be as late as possible.
The tenth is gonna be our deadline, guys, so the fifteenth won't be a viable option for us.
Alright. Well, go ahead and give us your findings.
Okay. You want me to start? But, let me just say this, uh, three, uh, good proposals. Um, each of them is very similar in terms of the benefits that are available. There's differences in which particular carriers may be involved in that process. Some minor differentiation in pricing, but not significant. So across the board, the proposals are at, you know, just at first blush, the proposals are pretty much equivalent, uh, as it relates to the offerings that are being made and the benefits that are afforded to the, to the various employees. The kinds of things that we were looking for, and that a significant amount of legwork was done, and I wanna compliment especially the ladies on the team, right, who were doing the hard work. Uh, Keith and I just got to sit around and pretend like we know what we're doing. But the, uh, the ladies actually made phone calls to local dentists, local optometrists, and asked, inquired, what is your experience with the various carriers that offer this coverage? And got feedback so that we would know, do, do they, do they have a good experience with these carriers, not so good experience with these carriers? That by and large, uh, what you found is that amongst the dentists and the vision folks in particular, that they were, they would be fine with any of the carriers that would be available under any of the proposals. That's, that was what we found. Now there are, your, your current, I'll just give you an example, on your current dental coverage, there's some anecdotal evidence, and nothing's been proved. We can't substantiate this information. It's anecdotal, uh, that there's some concerns about your current provider of dental coverage. That, that's the situation with that particular carrier's not been good. The, each of the proposals, though, does not offer coverage through that particular problematic area. So that's not a consideration that we have. But I'm just giving you the level of detail in the investigation. Uh, the life insurance and the accidental death, uh, those coverages are pretty consistent across the board. So I think what this decision's gonna come down to, guys, is issues unrelated to the substantive about the coverage and the benefits available. And more in line with which of the carriers, which of these groups that proposed is in a good position to service the needs of the employees. Which, which one has a plan and a program that provides a level of service? And, and I think that's where the distinction could possibly be. Uh, there's also another, one other issue that I wanna highlight is that one of the proposers actually included as a part of their proposal, an opportunity for the county to move its cafeteria plan. This is where individual employees are able to tuck away pre-tax dollars for use of their expense, their private party expense associated with particularly dentist, vision, or other kinds of, uh, insurance-related issues. They can tuck away pre-tax dollars and use those to defray some of their individual costs associated with these coverages. That's called a cafeteria plan. It's voluntary. Employees can choose to either participate or not. Uh, but it is, uh, it is an offering that we have as a part of our employment, uh, protocol. And, uh, one of the proposers in particular, uh, offered to oversee all of that cafeteria, uh, plan activity and use technology to better run and operate and promote that. And so that was, that was unique to one of the proposals. That happened to be risk management. Uh, it happened to be, help me, uh, specifically his risk management partners, uh, is the employee benefits packaged through risk, risk management. And so that, uh, that stood out, uh, as a highlight for that particular proposal. It doesn't mean that the other proposers are not in a position to do that. They just didn't speak on that in their proposals. Okay? So there's a little flavor for what we're looking at. Uh, you, you, you should be aware that, um, there, there are three proposers. Two of those proposers are, uh, have their place of business in Heinz County, and one of the proposers has their place of business in Blowwood Rankin County. And so if that makes a difference, uh, to you, uh, in light of that circumstance, that is a distinguishing factor as well. One of the proposers, risk management, uh, is also already, uh, alongside the county for purposes of brokerage services related to things like uh, law enforcement liability, general liability policies. And so that, that group is already actively engaged with the county on a number of other coverages that are not in play here. Uh, but I just mentioned that because there's an existing relationship there. Uh, but again, I wanna compliment, uh, each of the proposers for the work that they put into their proposals. They were well crafted, well done, uh, and they provided all of the details and the data that we needed to make an informed decision, and they've been engaging, uh, and trying to help us get through this decision-making process. And so I wanna compliment them because they've done an excellent job for their companies.
Okay.
You pretty much said it all.
I'll add a couple of things. Um, one of, one of the things we did do was, uh, met with the ones that provided an, an employee portal. And that was kind of the tipping scale for our recommendation, uh, was the ease of use for our staff, our employees, to access this insurance coverage, uh, where they can go in and administer their own coverage from, from day one, from their start date. Um, they can make changes and do everything themselves online. And, uh, look at all their options. They also other, uh, offer other options that we may not do through payroll. They'll have other options to go through and, and purchase themselves. Um, another consideration was, a lot of our employees have Aflac. They'll be able to continue to use Aflac. Uh, it would just, we will offer another service in lieu of Aflac that they're, they can choose from. But if they choose to keep Aflac, it will just be a direct, uh, withdrawal from their bank account instead of going through payroll, but they can keep it at the same rate. The staff's recommendation unanimously was to go with risk management and, uh, their proposal. And I'll let the board ask any questions you have on that.
Is risk management the one sent Rankin County or?
It is.
It is, okay. And I presume the coverage is, y'all said, is the same. I mean, and the cost is similar.
Yeah, was there any savings by any chance?
Um, it's actually a, a three-year rate guarantee. Um, and, and the rates are, I'll say some are a little less, some are about the same, and some are just a little more. They're, it's immaterial on the cost.
Okay.
Changes. But it's a three, three-year rate guarantee from there.
Okay.
Well, to be honest, I wouldn't know what else to ask, so.
I, I don't know.
I, I think it's good that you actually contacted somebody to say, hey, is this, are y'all gonna take this? Are not gonna take this? And it sounds like.
We've learned valuable lessons over time, Doctor McLeod.
We got insurance, but we gotta go to Memphis.
In, in full disclosure, just know that we're, we'd be changing, um, our dental insurance carrier provider and our vision insurance provider. They would go to different companies, uh, than we're currently using. So there'll be a new card for each of those. Um, and that's a little transition for the employees. But it's, it's gonna be pretty much across the board, whoever we choose.
And, and it's possible that an employee here or there may encounter a situation where their particular dentist does not take that particular coverage. That could happen. Same thing with the optometrist, it, it may be, but from what we understand, um, in the, from communicating with the local dentist, where they are not on a current coverage plan with a given carrier, it's easy for them to get on to that plan. Okay, so it, it doesn't mean that somebody's gonna lose their dentist. It just may mean that there has to be a period of time to transition over where that coverage applies. Just make y'all aware of that.
So I don't know if you know the answer to this, but like, when we change providers, let's say hypothetically, somebody just bought a new pair of glasses, say, last month.
Yeah. Right.
And if we get a new provider, we start from scratch or are they gonna keep up with our previous purchases? Okay.
I don't think that.
So we're saying.
Yeah, alright.
And I'll point out again, we do have representatives here to have questions of that as well.
Well, it's not that big a deal. I was just curious.
I was just curious.
Is the board ready to make a, a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, or go with our staff's recommendation.
That, I'll second that.
Alright, I got a motion by Jay, and I second, Doctor McLeod. No further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so. Motion carries.
Are we done? We have anything else?
Uh, I've got one item in executive session that's listed here.
Did you go get seen?
Need to get Mr. Scarborough back.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion going to executive session?
Motion?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just go with it.
Jay made a motion going to executive session. Doctor McLeod seconded that motion. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so.
It's me for litigation. Active, active litigation, discuss that.
Make motion to go in the executive session for a act, active litigation.
Second.
I'll second from Jay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.